Okay, we need a motion to reconvene open session. Thank you Beth and Eric. Okay. All in favor of reconvening open session, raise your hand. Alrighty, thank you very much. Please stand with us as we say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, we have a special recognition this evening. We have an American Heart Association representative here who wants to recognize some of our teachers. So Carrie Bockert, thank you.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. Um, I always love coming to school board meetings, especially during COVID times, because I have positive things to say to you all. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for having me. Um, as she said, my name is Carrie Bockert. I'm a youth market director for the American Heart Association, and I'm here to thank the Hillsborough community for your amazing support. Um, you have a longstanding partnership with the American Heart Association. And since these amazing PE teachers and Lisa as well, she was just telling me she did Jump Rope for Hearts, and you all have been participating with us. Um, you've raised, your community has raised over $350,000 for the American Heart Association. So, thank you. As you know, our lifesaving mission is more important than ever. Um, the folks that are getting COVID, 40% of those that are hospitalized have heart conditions. So, we know, um, our mission is more important now than it ever has been before. And we just so value your partnership with us. Um, heart disease is the number one killer in the United States, and it's 80% preventable, which is kind of scary, because a lot of people walk around and they think that's not going to happen to me, but they could. One out of five children deal with obesity, uh, which may develop into heart disease or diabetes as early as 25 years old. About 20% of kids meet the annual physical activity that they're supposed to meet every day. Uh, and we know that research shows that physical activity improves attendance, behavior, all the things you want kids to do in school. So, we just really appreciate your support. Um, Hillsborough students and staff have made a positive impact in the community by helping to raise funds for research, advocacy, and education for our lifesaving mission. And this year, the American Heart Association has invested in groundbreaking research by funding over $7 million here in the St. Louis metropolitan area. Um, we've trained 200,000 Missourians in CPR, and over 100,000 students participated in our Kids' Heart Challenge, or American Heart Challenge programs. Um, when COVID hit, um, because of your support and support of school districts around the country, we were able to quickly pivot and allocate $2.5 million towards research based on COVID and the impact of COVID on, on hearts. Um, this year, the Missouri, um, Heart Association, um, we had our very first Hardee's Award Program. And, um, I'm here to recognize some special people, because you have some award winners that won. And just a little caveat, we work with 550 schools. So, to have three of the awards go to Hillsborough is huge. So, that is, that's really, really neat. So, I'm going to share some good news. So, Erin Holly and Molly Vega, so come on up there. I heard she has to get on the video, so come stand up here. Okay, so this is for you. Thank you. Okay. They, um, are from Hillsborough Primary, and they won the Creative Heart Award. This award recognizes volunteers who are exceptional at creating unique incentives engaging student participation while encouraging lifesaving donations. And they are famous for their A-Grille. So, I think Dr. Isaacson, I think this year maybe you might come over and participate in that A-Grille. What do you think? I don't know, we'll see. Yeah.
I'll take the glitter again. Alright.
Tom Thornton, come on up. Um, he led Hillsborough Intermediate to be number one in the state of Missouri, American Heart Challenge School. They raised $8,341. Um, Hillsborough was one of the top performing school districts in Jefferson, or was the top performing school district in Jefferson County, and the number six school district in the state of Missouri, which is huge. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. Dr. Isaacson, I have a certificate for you, which you can display here. And I'd also like to recognize Timmy Tindale at Hillsborough Elementary. Her school was instrumental alongside these other two schools. Thank you. Um, for your school district being able to achieve that number six position. Um, so, you guys have an amazing PE staff. They're already excited for this year, so let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Um, and in return for your partnership, um, these PE teachers, um, were given $2,000 in U.S. Games certificates that they could use back in the program. So, we just want to tell you thank you. We appreciate your support. We're looking forward to partnering with you all next year or this school year, and hopefully I'll be back to see you guys next summer. So, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Well, I think it's pretty amazing. I'm excited all about that. Um, like I said before, when I taught, we did American Heart Association and I, uh, the Jump Rope for Heart programs, and I think that's so exciting. I'm, I'm thrilled over that. And in light of the accomplishments of our, of our, uh, physical education team, I'd like to ask the board if they would be willing to present them a medal next meeting. Present our board medals to these, uh, achievers. Are you all in favor of that? Okay, good. So, maybe we'll see you again next month, and we'll give you our board medal. So, thank you very much for your contributions. It's, it's pretty awesome. Alright. And we don't have any other visitors, so we will then move on to the consent agenda. Um, I need a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda as presented. Second, thank you. Renee and Beth. And this is 9A through 9H. Any discussion on, on those items on the consent agenda? Okay, if there's no questions, we'll take a vote then. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented? Very good. Thank you. That leads us then to our superintendent report. So, Dr. I.
Alright, I put some information in there, um, regarding some of the things that have been going on. Just an overview, I won't go through in depth. It's just your MSHA manual for the Board of Education. Uh, we received our determination letter, uh, that our Special Education Department had met the requirements in implementing, uh, the purposes of IDEA included that. We received our forgiveness, letter of forgiveness of attendance hours being built from the spring of 2019-20. That is included in there as well. Governor Parsons has waived the, um, the two-fold, uh, retirement. Retiree 550 hours, so that retirees can sub within, um, school districts over and above that. In addition, they had changed the rulings to requiring the 20 hours of construction as yet. Dr. Patnick and Desi still hasn't released. But that course is going to be, they're still working on it. Um, include the athletic event protocols in there as we begin the fall season. Uh, I know our, um, administration and Mr. Shod is working extensively with the Jefferson County Athletic Directors, trying to provide the safest environment that they can uh, at our contests as we begin. Football starts tomorrow night at Northwest. Um, and so he has sent that information out to the community, um, on some, uh, limiting some access as we begin the school year. Uh, we'll be updating if there's any changes to that, uh, between now and the foreseeable future. Kind of jumping back up to the top is, um, to update the board, we ordered 200 more hotspots. So, we will have the 500 hotspots. And that's been going well as far as they've been snapped up and handed out. We did make an adjustment to the Chromebook purchase. The original purchase that we had made, uh, at the July board meeting, Mr. Moore received notification from that vendor that it may be late September, October-ish. Um, and that just wasn't acceptable. You know, as we're, we're going to do hybrid and do virtual learning. The kids have to have that device. You know, as a parent myself, I wouldn't want to hear, "Hey, you're not going to have a device in your hand," and whatnot. So, the technology department, uh, Mr. Moore, with some assistance, had, uh, from his team, they were able to secure, you know, it's kind of a wild dash of having to make an immediate decision in order to get it. The previous company allowed us to get out of our PO, which they didn't have to do if we're bound to that. We're able to, uh, work with a company in North Carolina. They had actually had quotes out, uh, for these Chromebooks, but nobody had signed the dotted line. So, Ms. Genge worked to kind of flip that around. There was some additional cost in doing it, but they're better Chromebook, they're the, um, touchscreen, like a Surface. And they will be going to our primary age students, K-1, 2, and those literally that turned around in a week. Those Chromebooks came in and Mr. Moore, his staff, and Dr. Freeman, uh, and multitude of people all came together, in all of our buildings, but in that building, came together, they're all working, they were getting handed out already, so we're ready to go to start with the school year. So, thank you to all them on the hotspots. Uh, and the Chromebooks. Um, some back-to-school updates is, we'll ask Mr. Allison coming up or some of our administrators to come up. Just talk about what are some of the things that we're doing in our building? Safety-wise, what students can expect, their parents can expect? What tweaks have we made? Yeah, why don't you come up?
Uh, here are some things we've done at the junior high, um, to, that are related to safety, whether it's staff, students, everybody. Um, we've added a lunch shift to, uh, to change from three shifts to four, so that I'll take our lunch shift number from about 180 down to 50 or 60 kids. Um, should have more than four kids ever sitting at one of our big tables at a time. Uh, we've removed half of our furniture, um, so that each class instead of being ready for 30 kids is now ready for 14 to 16 students. Again, it doesn't, doesn't completely eliminate our social distancing problem, but it makes it a whole lot easier. And most of our classes, if they have about 12, they can guarantee that they're going to be six feet apart, except for if they're working on a science project or something where they do have to come together. Mr. Bass has been praised as hand sanitizer and sanitizer spray in every classroom. He's installed Plexiglas in our front office areas, anywhere that would be dealing with the public. Uh, we've placed trays or bins right in our little entryways so that a parent could make their contact with delivery if they'd like to. They can come in, drop their item off. If a kid forgot their bookbag, their phone book, lunch, they could drop it off there and they could send someone out to get it after their parents left. The library has moved to, uh, a delivery service, so the kids will check out books virtually, and they will deliver the book to them in their class, as opposed to them coming down and touching all the library books, and there's not a really good way to clean those. Treatment fountains have turned off. We'll use bottle fillers for students. Cafeterias rearranged their lines so that they're not coming down the middle of the cafeteria, they're going along one wall. We need to move tables away from where the line will be. Getting kids through a little easier and less near each other. Trying to handle those crowds. Teachers have developed new procedures to deal with the handling and cleaning of their supplies. Uh, great examples are science teachers that are really headed to rethink how they're going to use their lab equipment and be able to clean it for the next group to come in. Uh, PE, same way, so that they can clean all the supplies that the kids are using before they come in the next hour. Uh, again, Raisers Group has posted signs throughout the building. We're going to post some more that our teachers have made. Just encourage your kids to have safe practices. Uh, our nurses set up a daily screening stations for our staff. We actually have three of them in our building, so when we get back to all 50 people coming in the junior high at once, we'll be able to handle all those teachers without them all crowding into one office and kind of spread that out. All passing times have been eliminated or how they eliminated, decreased to three minutes to discourage, uh, social time in the halls. Kids aren't going to like it, but, uh, they're going to have less time to visit and more time to get class, and they can visit when they get there. Uh, buses have changed their drop-off practices, so they're going to drop off kids in more waves. We normally drop off in two big waves. We're not going to drop off in three waves. Plus with having a hybrid, we're going to have a lot less kids crowding coming in the front entryway. Same thing with exiting. We've got rid of our buddy bus system, so now instead of dismissing kids out to 15 buses, we'll not have 30 buses there, plus half the kids. So, we'll have a lot less crowding as the kids run and getting on the buses. That can be a little crazy during that time. We're also staggering our release time. We're going to let the girls out, uh, two minutes early so that they can get to their lockers and be moving toward exits before the boys are released. Again, to just stagger them. Everyone goes to their locker when they end the day, and, uh, that's something we really don't want to control. Something they need to do. They've got a lot of supplies they've got to pick up. If they're extracurriculars, they've got to pick things up, so, um, we know they'll build their lockers. We're just going to kind of slow that down when we'll be in the day and give the girls a head start. Questions? Okay, so, education's going to take place in all of our classes, but primarily, we're going to use our academic lab for that. Um, our plan is kind of several components to it. One of them is we're going to show a lot of educational videos. We're going to do some of the health department videos. Um, we've got a committee that's going through and looking at some, finding their own. Why do we wash our hands? Why do we stand six feet away? Kids are told those things by adults, but we're going to try to explain them to them in a little more detail and give them some practical examples. Uh, we've also had a committee, same group, have put together, uh, I don't know what we're calling it. It's like a social contract. It looks like a big Declaration of Independence that they're all going to sign. They're going to go through as a lab and talk about, um, proper safety procedures and proper social etiquette. Just like when I walked in here, I didn't come too close to you. And I know to do that, and you know to do that. Sometimes our kids don't think about that. So, our lab teacher's going to go through that with them, and they're going to pull it out. I think they've got about 10 or 12 points on there, and then they're all going to sign it down at the bottom, like the Declaration of Independence. And, uh, we're going to hang that up in all the classes. And then our teachers are also developing some posters and things like that. They, they want to hang out in restrooms, uh, hallways, doorways, that just kind of remind kids of what they need to be doing.
Yep. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad I could follow that. Well, a lot of what Mr. Allison mentioned, we've also done at the high school. The, the biggest thing is the social distancing. We wanted to make sure that not only did we decrease the number of students in our classes, but that we removed any seating that we didn't need to avoid having students sit in seats that they weren't supposed to. So, we literally have moved half the furniture out of the classrooms. We were able to store a lot of it in the building. Maintenance was able to haul some of it away, not too far away, because we hope to have it back soon. But, uh, the, the spreading or just creating a lot of extra space so that students won't be crowded in here. Of course, we're going to have them back at a time. It's going to give us a fighting chance to make sure that they're not crammed into spaces where they can't be six feet apart. Obviously, we are requiring them to wear masks anytime they're in transition in the building. That means when they come in, when they leave, when they transition between classes, when they stand in the lunch line. Uh, but when they are in class and able to stay six feet apart, we're allowing them to take their masks down. Uh, we didn't have to add any extra lunch shifts, but we've decreased, our lunch shifts are running at about 140 students, where they normally run over 300. So, I feel confident that, given the size of our commons, we're going to be able to keep our kids' oil space. Um, we've increased the signage throughout the building about social distancing and hand washing. We have some COVID protocol that we shared with our freshmen at King of Hawk. We've shared with our parents several times in a number of different ways. We'll also be sharing them dur- during our advisory time to educate our students in a couple of different ways about the importance of following protocol. Uh, we've also educated our staff. In our staff meetings, we talked a lot about the importance of being role models and, and showing the kids how it's done. That's always important in anything that we do, especially now. Like he said, we've got hand sanitizer and sanitizer throughout the building. Uh, we'll be asking our kids and our teachers to step up and help with cleaning of high-touch surfaces. We changed our, yeah, we changed our office procedures. We, we pretty much closed the front of our office, and, and we now use a window that also has a plastic sneeze guard, so that if you had, if, we're, we're limiting any nonessential travel throughout the office. So, we're trying to keep that inner core, uh, from accessing a lot of extra germs. And so, students that need to come to the office will go to a window, and if they need to come inside the office, we can certainly let them in. We've also cut down on nonessential visitors to the building. If someone has an educational purpose, obviously, we would let them in, but we're discouraging parents from bringing a lot of items to the school during the day. I think that's about it. Questions?
So, we did all of those things. Um, I think we have done almost all those things. But at the primary, elementary, and the intermediate, we're also doing a few other things. So, we are doing grab-and-go breakfasts. So, students will not be going to the cafeteria for breakfast in the morning. They will, it, it's a little different in each building, but, um, basically, they're going to get a, a, a paper bag with that breakfast items in it, a juice, some milk, some cereal, a side item, some chilled fruit. Um, and then those will be taken, taken into the classrooms and eaten there. Because in the mornings, all the different classes intermingle for breakfast, and we wanted to avoid that. It'd be impossible with contact tracing to, to figure out who was near whom. So, K through 6, we're going to take our breakfast to the classrooms. But they'll eat lunch in the lunchrooms. And at the primary, we have taken, um, tape, floor tape is our best friend. And we've taped off all of the seating areas in the cafeteria so that they are, the kids are pretty distance apart. And then throughout the hallways, the different teachers will be using specific restrooms throughout the day. They've been assigned restrooms. And there are denotations on the floor, how far the kids need to stand apart, because otherwise, they just crowd right there together. And we're working, we're going to work on walking in lines a little bit further apart. I don't want them six feet apart, because our lines would wrap around the entire building. But we're definitely going to do one winged stand, even though not two winged stands, but we're going to do one winged stand apart for walking. Um, in the mornings, our students will be dropped off either by a bus or by any private car, and parents will not be walking kids into the other school, which is a huge difference at the primary. But it worked over summer school. We've made our parents aware. We continue to make our parents aware. We keep reminding them that it will be fine. We will have plenty of faculty and staff to escort the, especially the little ones, to their kindergarten classrooms. Um, but it will be fine. And then we will also not be having parents and guardians come into the building at the end of the day to pick up for ride or row. We are going to have faculty and staff greeting parents and guardians outside in, um, toward the cafeteria in that little parking lot area. There's two sidewalks that we'll be utilizing. And we have, we're going to use a, um, messaging system through our phones to retrieve kids, bring them out to the guardians and parents. And in some cases, we have a few parents who have either health concerns of their own, or younger siblings have health concerns. They didn't want to bring them, they don't want to come out into being around more people, so we are going to escort their children down to the lower parking lot so that they do not have to do that. And we're doing a similar situation at the junior high. We will have a bin out in the foyer area so that parents or anyone who has something that they need to drop off, they will either be greeted by someone, either Michelle or Courtney, or they can leave it right there in the bin, and we'll pick it up and, and make sure it's delivered. So, we've got the sneeze guards up in the office. My teachers have all ordered individual separators for their various rainbow tables and their various tables and desks in the classrooms. Most of our teachers have removed about 50% of the furniture, and those who didn't have them sectioned off and all labeled, so the kids are not sitting anywhere near each other. We've got plenty of space in our classrooms now. Our highest class number is a white day in a second grade classroom where we do have 14 children. But other than that, the kindergarten classes are running about eight. And the first grade classes are running about 10 to 11, and second grade runs mostly 12, a few 13s, and then I had that one anomaly of 14. But we moved kids so many times, we were just, our, that teacher was willing to make it work. We went into her room, checked things out, and did some measuring, and it was okay. Plus, we have the sneeze guards up now, so. But our kids will wear masks when they're transitioning. They're each going to have a Ziploc baggie to put their masks in. We have talked to some other schools, and I wasn't crazy about the other ideas that they'd come up with. Some schools are putting those masks on mannequins, but bathroom breaks, that's disgusting. It's not even good there. And then other, another school I talked to was wrapping them around their wrists, but I just didn't feel like that was very sanitary. So, we're going to have, we have lots of Ziploc's on, um, hand. Every teacher has one for every student. We've got enough for them to get another one. I'll go get more if we need them. But they just simply take a little carton out to recess with them, take their masks, put them in their baggies, and they'll be nice and clean for them to, lean-ish, for them to put back on when they come back in. But they'll wear their masks in, in line on their way anywhere or anytime that they just can't socially distance. But once they get in the classroom and they get spread apart, then they can take those masks off. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for all the work everybody's done.
Well, and along those lines, I just, as you can hear, how much work has been done. And if you think about it, I, I want to thank, I mean, you know, the brand, Mr. Roy, and Ms. Genge, that all summer, it's, the best laid plans always kept changing. You know, and this team of administrators, uh, and some in new roles, some in old roles, is, if you think about it, about the first part of August, we're like, we may need to do a change. But officially, on August 11th is when we put full resources into doing it. We're August 27th, so 16 days. And Ms. Phillips and Ms. Spiller literally flipped an entire district and rewrote bus routes and visiting with parents and trying to coordinate daycares and alleviate a monster issue in parent fears. Mr. Bass, feeling my phone calls, like, can we just do this more and this more? Meanwhile, during normal summer cleanups. And Mr. Moore, who's getting Chromebooks and working and his team, hours at end. And with constant emergencies, now we can't get them till October. Those type of things, we need more hotspots. You know, in a meeting a week ago or a week and a half ago, we need 200 webcams for teachers. And they're here already. Nurse Woodham calls me yesterday, like, I found some more PPE for our staff and masks and face shields. They came today. And just everyone and teachers who came in. Melissa and I were talking, and it's been a stressful summer, but if we also, on a personal level, feel like a little less stressful because the Army arrived. And thankful to them for all the work that they've done. And our community has been great. Our teachers have been great. They're excited to come back, or they apprehend some shirt, but they're excited to see kids. I'm excited to see people come together like they always do in the Hillsborough School District. You know, I don't like having conflict and chaos and issues, but anytime that happens, our community comes together with something special. That's kudos to them. And, and the board's a part of that, too, in supporting us. And they feel that, and that's where the magic happens, and I think our kids will benefit when they roll in on the 31st. Are there going to be hang-ups, some difficulties? Sure, but I'm excited. Our football team plays football tomorrow. Our seniors are getting those activities. Kids are having their first day of kindergarten. Kids are having their first day of kindergarten. It looks different, but it's school and I think we'll make it as a testament to our good performance.
Thank you all.
That's great. We appreciate it as well, all efforts by everyone. Truly amazing. Thank you for that report and for the reports from our administrators. Um, there is no unfinished business to tackle this evening, so we'll move on to the new business on the agenda. The first item is to approve a new tax rate hearing date. So I need a motion from the board to conduct a tax rate hearing meeting um to be at 6:30 PM on Thursday, September 24th, 2020, and that notice will be published in accordance with the state law. Thank you, Renee and Beth. Any discussion about that date of September 24th?
I haven't looked at the schedule. Is that anywhere near the regular board?
That's, that is.
Okay, so we're just going to, when do we start?
We start at 6:30?
I mean, the regular board meeting?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock and you're going to issue your math?
Right. That's been the plan for as long as I've been here. Okay, any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor of setting September 24th as our tax rate hearing date? That's hard to say. All right, motion carries then. The next item, we need a motion to approve the originator of officials' contract agreements for the boys and girls soccer teams, wrestling, boys and girls basketball, football, volleyball, baseball, and softball. Thank you, Beth. And second for Eric. Any questions? Any clarification needed on that contract? All right, all in favor of approving the officials' contract agreements, raise your hand. All right, very good. Next item, um, we need a motion to approve the certifying staff substitute classroom custodial rate of pay at $50 for completing one half of normal shift duties. Thank you, Beth and Renee. Discussion then.
Yeah, what this is, is uh this, we've been looking at some potential ways to uh save money potentially, but also look at a different way of doing things within the district. We had visited with some teachers, um, with some of the recent budget cuts. We're not having the tutoring programs and such and we talked about whether just, there's work we've done in the district. Uh, and we don't want to eliminate jobs by any means, but if there's uh rather than hiring a substitute custodian or maybe even potentially in the future, if uh there was enough interest to where we didn't need a full-time employee doing it to hire like a new custodian, if we had teachers that were wanting to have kind of a second job and as opposed to going to work at a Walmart, uh, an outside entity away from here, if their second job was here, that could be flexible enough that they could be great teachers, but earn a little bit of extra money. Uh, that was kind of our thought process and working with Mr. Bass to provide that opportunity. Establish the rate of $50, not going on an hourly rate, the stipend rate is a lot of our jobs are with teachers. Uh, it's, it gets a little bit difficult to establish what is that rate? Our custodial rate's about $10 an hour. $50, uh, and that's for starting with zero experience type of situation, but uh $50 is then dividing the duties um not by time and half, so not like requiring a four-hour day, but requiring if a custodian is over an eight-hour day would clean 20 rooms, they would clean 10. You know, our expectation is that they've done well. Uh, we have high standards on that. We would do the training, but just using our own uh employees that we currently have rather than potentially hiring new that don't currently work for the district is that way there's potential savings in background checks. Uh, you know, there are our own employees or provide them the opportunity to earn as much income as they can while providing value to the district. And potentially, I don't know this, but if there is enough interest, you know, if there's a reduction, it has to either be potential savings from insurance, you know, because you're not hiring a full-time person, you're using somebody that already has benefits. So just want to give it a try, throw it out there, see uh what the response is and just try something new.
Okay, so this thing involves the drivers though, right? Have the teachers?
No, that, that would be the item D.
Well, C says.
Certified. Certified staff substitute classroom.
I guess I, oh, yeah, we'll do the wrong. Never mind, sorry.
One of the things too I want to clarify, uh, and it's frustrating, is I haven't been able to figure out a loophole for our classified staff, our hourly staff. Because one of the things, I know that we would have hourly staff that don't necessarily work as a custodian, like a paraprofessional, a secretary. And I was like, hey, I would like to work additional time. Unfortunately, being an hourly, they're paid hourly and they, and we would have employees saying, I would take you the $50. You know, I will do that. You don't, I don't want to clock in. We have to clock because that's, it's the laws, the Federal Labor Standards Act is there to protect the employee so that we're not making employees work 60 hours a week, but saying, well, that's a different job. That's a different job. But in this case, it hurts and it hurts when I visit with Mr. Shaw with gate, people that keep gate and do the extras. As a district, unfortunately, our hourly staff, it limits what we're able to have them do unless we have a four-day week potentially. You know, if we had a four-day week or snow days, then we can supplement that and allow it, but we can't, if we're paying people to work over 40 hours, then they would have to get overtime. And so it's, it's a rule that's meant to protect. Sometimes it's frustrating as uh to see people like, hey, we can't allow you to make more money because it would be too much. It's like a backwards.
So on the virtual day, on Wednesday, all pairs, all secretary, everybody is?
They, our paraprofessionals will be working, secretaries. Our plan is to, now it may look different, like when I visit with the drivers, is hey, we may need you to, to be willing to work outside the office. Because it has to be valuable to the district, you know, as far as for that. But our goal is to not reduce anyone's income. They have families that need payments to make and so.
Okay, so the motion is to approve this rate of pay at $50 for completing half of the normal shift. All in favor? Okay, very good. Motion carries. And the last item on tonight's list is, um, we need to, she lost my page. We need to make a motion to approve that as long as the district remains in the hybrid schedule, bus drivers will receive their normal rate of pay for hours worked and not to be subject to wait time reductions of pay rate. Overnight hours would not be paid and would be determined based on the trip. It's a big motion. Thank you, John and Eric. Discussion, John, or Dr. Isaacson?
Uh, this is, this is uh another opportunity with this uh hybrid system and drivers aren't going to be driving on Wednesday. And so we're going to be cleaning buses, uh, but there's also trips that need to be run, midday trips that need to be run. And our current, we have some institutional kind of ways of doing things. One of those is when a driver takes a trip and at a field trip to the zoo or uh a trip to Minnesota or goes a trip to Jackson or they're at the wrestling state championship. When they're driving to Columbia, they get paid their normal rate for that they went driving. But when they get there and they drop the kids off and they're waiting for the contest, their rate of pay drops to half their normal rate of pay or minimum wage, whichever is greater. As an employee, you can imagine, you're, you're away from your family, you're away from, it's kind of a deterrent to doing that. Uh, however, one of the reasons it was probably there was to, you know, reduce costs at some point. Our goal would be to try to come up with a system that's more uniform. Uh, I think when I say fair, but it's fair to the drivers is if you're away, work is work. If you're away, is there more responsibility when you're driving? Sure, but you're still responsible for a $90,000 bus and such. It's changing that to where we're not paying wait time when you're sleeping, but while you're working, you're going to get paid your regular rate. By not working on uh Wednesday, uh, I have visited with uh the transportation bus drivers and just asked and said, hey, we're in a time and we kind of talked about our transportation department. Talked about rethinking some things and how we've done things from a seniority standpoint and such, is trying to build the transportation department for the long term and try to build a better department that, again, they're able to make a great living wage even if, you know, things are a little bit different and working together. So our thought process is Ms. Phillips is going to visit with the drivers. Um, some have childcare, you know, they have young kids that can't go anywhere, all right? Then you'll work on Wednesday and potentially Ms. Jackson's actually going to use some bus drivers in the lunchroom to fill in the lunchroom and use our current employees to do different things rather than just these silos where we have employees working 25 hours, getting full benefits. It's trying to maximize what they can make in the district, um, and use them a different way. So, but once that is set, if I'm scheduled to drive for the, to Northwest for the football game tomorrow, if I say, Ms. Phillips, I can't, something's come up, I would use my leave time. But that's going to make up their normal hours. She's going to try to basically, if I lost six hours from working on Wednesday, I'll build that in. I may do a cross-country trip on a Saturday or I may have two softball games on Tuesday, Tuesday and Thursday and basically working six-hour day on Monday, 10-hour day on Tuesday and Thursday, off Wednesday and work my normal round on Friday. Is just be flexible, but we want to give them enough time. Here's your schedule for the entire month or have it all the way through October. I think it will be more efficient. I know it'll cause less stress on the transportation department as a general because the coaches, they'll know who the driver is. Uh, and I think there could be some really long-term benefits to the district, um, more efficiency and such. And our drivers have been receptive to visiting with them, but also we're going to go back and constantly check, hey, what are some of the things? What aren't you liking? All right, you like the old way? Why do you like the old way? And continue to reevaluate it. And this allows us that opportunity, trying to fill the hours. And if we're going to fill the hours, I don't want to try to do when they're getting paid less during that period of time.
Any questions? Okay, so the motion on the floor then is to allow the bus drivers to receive their normal rate of pay for hours worked and eliminate the wait time reduction during the hybrid time. All in favor? All right, motion carries.
Do a journey.
Second. They're not excited about that or anything. All in favor of the journey? All right, motion carries. Thank you for attending this evening. We appreciate your attendance and your support. Have a great evening.